Good morning, I'd like to welcome all of you here today with us in the Commissioners Auditorium and those of you who are out watching this on television. And I'd also like to welcome our Assistant County Manager Melanie Bryant, who's also our Finance Director, and she is sitting in for our Manager Scott Elliott, who is at a workshop this week. I think I got all of that right. I'd like to call our meeting to order, please, and do our road call, gentlemen. And, Mr. Webb, would you do the pledge?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. McGlaughlin, would you do the invocation?
I will.
Thank you. Please stand.
I shall pray. Heaven, Father, be come this morning to give you things. Thank you to God for this day, as that you come into this meeting. Have it to be as you wish. In thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Space the flag.
May the attendance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. Let's vote, please. Okay, we have two public hearings. Mr. Rhodes, if you'll come forward first, this is the American Materials Company.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Hammond. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Again, this morning, we have two public hearings. The first one is concerning an item, a conditional use permit, that you dealt with at your last meeting. It was tabled. Since that point in time, there's been a community meeting concerning this particular item, and I'll present a bit more information about that after some of the details of the proposal. Again, this is a conditional use permit for a sand mining operation. With this process, it is considered quasi-judicial, and there are a number of factors that need to be considered, and I'll go through that as part of the staff report. And again, as far as any appeal, would go to Superior Court. And again, for these procedures, more or less like a court case, we'll be establishing facts here, not hearsay. Witnesses will be placed under oath and be looking for specific evidence concerning this case. Detailed records will be kept, no ex parte communication unless you divulge that information here at this hearing today, and written findings of fact are required here. And with that, I'll ask the clerk to the board to swear in the witnesses this morning.
Okay, if you plan to speak to this issue, you have to step forward and swear, be sworn in. So if you'll come forward and kind of make a circle around our clerk, and she'll step down there so that everybody can get to her. Sir? I would like to speak just in general that, excuse me, I was just gonna say about the, if you have a large group here to say the same thing, if you want to have a spokesman or two or three, and then we'll allow you to call on all the people here that are on the side of your view. Okay? But if you want to all speak, that will be fine also, but just to let you know that. Okay, don't, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, as far as the staff report to advise you again about the details of this application, it is a conditional use permit for a sand and gravel mine, and it's located at the intersection of NC 222 and Old River Road, very close to Bellevore. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan designates this area as agricultural open natural resource. Again, a large portion of this, as I'll show on some maps, is included in the Hundred Year Flood Plain or the floodway. The site is located adjacent to an existing sand mine, as we've discussed, and that particular sand mine was approved by this Board in 2004. As I mentioned, this came before you at your June 18 meeting, the Board tabled the item at that point, suggested that the applicant proceed with a community meeting with the adjacent property owners, and that was held on June 26 at the Bellevore Fire Department. The site is under consideration, again, bounded on the map on the screen in red, intersection of 222 and Old River Road is right here at the very top of the screen. The area in the 100, this is actually the floodway area. This is an area that building construction is not allowed within, however, mining operations can take place there. There are also wetlands on the site that have to be considered, and again, some of those delineations have already been made by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer. There's also a buyout program that the county now owns here shaded in blue. This is one of the homes that was acquired after Hurricane Floyd due to flooding. Cemetery also on site. This is the plant processing area shown in gray. And the areas that would actually be part of the mining operation are shown in the salmon color on the screen. This shows the zoning categories for this particular area of the county. The areas in dark green are rural agricultural, that's where this property is located. Rural agricultural does allow mining operations as a conditional use permit. These are the existing land uses, as we talked about. Just adjacent on the opposite side of 222 is an existing mining operation. The area shown in the tan color are existing residential. One lot here across NC 222, and also back toward the south and east of the proposed area would be also another small area of residential uses. As far as our zoning ordinance is concerned, with any mining operation, there are specific conditions that need to be met. Number one, minimum 100 foot of separation from the edge of the pit, hours of operation, if blasting's involved, there are screening requirements, and also a state issued mining permit is required. We mentioned criteria earlier on in this presentation, there are specific ones that need to be dealt with when looking at this. As far as staff is concerned, we'll go through these criteria and give you our recommendation. Will the site materially endanger the public health or safety? Staff comments, the use will be screened and buffered from adjacent properties, and we also have some additional conditions we'll mention in a minute, and will not materially endanger public health and safety. Will it substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property? The proposed mine is adjacent to an existing sand mine, and the other adjacent uses are primarily agricultural or some limited residential uses, and we do not feel that it would substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. Would it be in harmony with the area, again, existing sand mine there, several other operations along this roadway? We believe that it would be consistent with the type of uses that are in that area. Is it in conformity with the land use plan and other plans officially adopted by the Commissioners? We believe that it is. So with that, Madam Chair, we have two motions today. Number one, acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete and complies with the zoning ordinance. Number two, approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions I've mentioned, as well as some additional conditions. Number one, 200-foot buffer being provided between the edge of the pit and parcel 6395 owned by Mr. and Ms. Brown, and this would extend from Old River Road back to that existing cemetery that I showed on the map earlier. Applicant must also clarify the location of the processing area, and there are some screening requirements there as well. And these are the two additional areas we've mentioned. This would be an additional 100-foot setback. Mr. Brown's property's right here on the opposite side. This is an additional 100-foot setback, making a 200-foot buffer along his property line back to the corner of the cemetery which rests right here. This, again, is a processing area that we need a bit more information about where the actual structures and basins will be located. There are some others, no ride certificate is also required. This deals with flood plain and floodway. 100-foot riparian buffers are required to be shown unless they're exempted, and also the stormwater ordinance for the county must be complied with. With that, Madam Chair, we're ready for the public hearing.
Okay, I think I jumped the gun getting ahead of you opening the public hearing. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Rhodes. And now I'll declare the public hearing opened, and our manager, interim manager, will call the people up who have signed.
The first speaker is Johnny Penner.
And if you'll identify yourself and where you live.
Okay. Madam Chairperson, Board, Beth.
Hey, Johnny.
And the fellow Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning, bring a little information. And James just alluded to it a few minutes ago, but about eight years ago, I was standing right here asking for the same thing that Mr. and Ms. Carson and Mike are asking for today, and that's the conditional use permit for you to approve it. The reason I was here earlier was because of the economic situation that we were experiencing at that particular time. The peanut allotment had been bought out, the tobacco allotment had been bought out. I was exploring options because I had recently retired from the school system. And after careful study, I found out I had some quality sand, just like these people do today. And I was introduced to Mr. Bezzel and American Materials, and we developed a long relationship that had started, again, eight years ago. We've lived on that site ever since the mining started. We now have three families that are living there. My and I, my wife, my youngest son and his wife, and three grandchildren, eight, six, and four. And I know one of the issues that was brought up before and at this meeting at the Fire Department was safety. I never knew you could love someone as more than you love your own children, but I love these grandchildren as much as any of you love your grandchildren, if you're fortunate enough to have any. And I wouldn't have anything in the world to happen to them, and neither would American Materials. They are the most safety-conscious people that I believe I could have ever hoped and dreamed to be in contact with and associated with. The truck drivers, I wonder sometimes if they're gonna make it to the scales, they're going so slow, you know, down the hall road in front of my house. They're constantly waving, they're constantly looking out for the children that might be playing. Another issue was dust, and Tim has a converted cement truck that he runs up and down this hall road, and the roads that the trucks travel every day wetting the road so that the dust, you know, doesn't fly around and accumulate and bother to somebody. But I think really, right now, and this is straight from my heart, I think the country we're living in right now, there's a lot of problems and things that are going on. But one thing I think we can do as fellow citizens and neighbors is support each other when we want to do something with our property. I think if you abide by rules, regulations, and laws, and you follow them to the nth degree, and you align yourself with whatever the rulings may be, that it should be within your right to do what you want to do with your property. I sometimes don't like to look at sale towers, but that's benefiting the property owner. They get money, rent from it. There are many other operations that go on that might, to some people, be unsightly and to the people that own them and operate them are beauty. And I just think it's time for us to join together and support each other when you're trying to better yourself and at the same time, your property. And the other issue is, these people are the ones that pay the taxes on it. You know, so they should have the right to do what they want to do with their property as long as this, again, in accordance with all the laws and regulations. And then I encourage any of you, I think Tim had passed around a pamphlet before, but if you want to see something that's really beautiful, you can come and see about probably a third to a half of the mining operation that we live on has been reclaimed. It is absolutely beautiful. And I can't hardly wait to see the finished product because it is gonna be a sight to see. And I think it's done a lot to me, and I think to people that I've talked to that live in the community, to enhance Bellevore community a little bit. And I, again, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm supporting your, this request to rezone it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penner. Next, Myra Penner.
Madam Chairperson and the Commissioners, I'm Johnny's wife, and it was mentioned at the Fire Department about the noise level. And I'm here to speak on the noise level of the sand mine. I sit in my house and read. I don't watch television all day long. I sit in the back and read outside. I don't hear those trucks. Maybe I've gotten used to them, but they are really not loud. You don't hear a lot of talking, you don't hear profanity. Mr. Bezzel went to great length at this meeting to assure the neighbors that their noise level is not a factor. They open at 6:30 in the morning, they close at 5:30. I never am bothered by any loud noises. The worst noises I have out there is on Old River Road and 222 with the souped-up vehicles. I think they are souped-up mufflers, I'm not a car person, and the boom boxes. And y'all know what I'm talking about. They'll drown out TV, they'll drown out your mind, but that's what I hear. I don't hear the trucks. Now, when I go out at night, late at night, like my late at night's 10, 11, to walk my dog before I go to bed, and if I get up early, 6, 6:30, 5:30, and walk my dog, I can hear a dog barking, and I can hear roosters crowing, and they come from Mr. Brown's property. He has a dog tied up in a pen with roosters. Well, you can't close a rooster down at 12 o'clock at night like you can a landmine. And you can't tell them at 3 o'clock in the morning to be quiet, or a dog, because I hear other dogs that are dumped off in my yard barking. And I would think those roosters and dogs would be just as much of a noise problem as the trucks in a sand mine that are going slow. I don't see how they could be any difference. Now, I can see his place from my house, so that's how far the noise is traveling. So it has to be pretty loud to go across the field where they want to dig a lake, then go across 222, and then go across another lake to get to my house. But that said, yesterday, we were over there, and I was on Dupree property, which is my cousin's property where they want to mine. And I was asked to get off by Mr. Brown's son. Now, that's property I went on as a little girl, and that's not his property. His son said he didn't know who I was. Maybe he didn't. But it's not his place to tell people to get off my property, or my cousin's property. It's their place to tell them to get off property. I think he's become so used to that property being vacated that they begin to believe it's theirs. But the part that they showed on the map that used to be a home was my Aunt Anna and Uncle JT's zone, and I loved them as much as I love my mother and daddy. Johnny and I leased that property back from the county, and we spent tons of money over there cleaning it up. And there's a pretty pond there, and it's clear. And we put a sign, the best we could afford out there, that said, "In memory of Aunt Anna and Uncle JT." Mike and Neil. That's how much we think of that property. You ought to go by the day and see the beautiful pink trees that are growing down the roadside. Now, if they come in and put lakes or ponds on both sides, that's gonna enhance that property. And if Johnny and I live long enough, who's not to say, it's a shady area, we could go in there and fix a picnic area for Bellevore, something like that. And eventually, when our lake is finished, we're gonna name it Lake Elmo in honor of my father, who, all the Dupre's were raised where we're building this lake. And we're gonna, it's in honor of my grandparents. We have signs all in the back where we have preserves. We're preserving animals. We have some of the most beautiful animals back there that we take our grandchildren back there and watch. We aren't destroying this property. We're trying to bring in wildlife, trying to make it beautiful out there. Bellevore, yes, somebody said been called the pits, and I know I got hushed.
That's okay, if you want to just wind up, that would be fine.
Pits, been called pits, the pit of the North County. Well, I lived on a beautiful place on the Punggoh Creek, but I came back to Bellevore to help make it pretty. And if you want these pictures, this is the dog tied up, and these are the roosters, and this is the nice sign that I saw. And that's the tight neighbors that are saying there's too much noise.
If you want to give those to the clerk, she'll pass them down for us. Thank you very much. Next.
Lonnie Brown.
And Madam Chair, seeing you're aware, I am keeping time at a max of five minutes, which is that is your guideline.
Yes, for our public hearing. Thank you. Thank you.
How are you doing? I'm the man that's made out as the criminal by owning some roosters. These people that got a sand pit running all night long, these pumps running all night, sound like a diesel setting at your bedroom window. I reckon I'm the bad guy in this picture. But I don't think they had a right to come here and dig sand and put a hole of water when I bought my property, I didn't buy it, to have a sand pit next door to me that I got to sit down and look at. And the noise, if I wanted water and property, I'd have went down to the coast and bought me some property. But I understood that this was, houses would be put here. And if you stop and think about what they're talking about, Rocky Mountain has started closing the sand pits up there because it is a dead tax property that's gonna never bring in any more taxes than what is there because you got a hole of water. No taxes will ever benefit from that hole of water, other than what's there. You put houses there, that's more taxes for the county. Which way are we going? Are we going backwards, or are we gonna go forward? Would you, what's the best for the county and for the neighborhood? The community don't want it. The community should have some say in it. Don't look like we're gonna get any say in it. They're gonna do what they want to do to us. I don't want it. I don't want it on there. And far as she talks about my son, they probably came down my path, which is mines. That's probably what he directed them off of, is because we have people coming there all hours of the night parking, and we don't know what they're up to. So if we see you, we will ask you, what are you doing? You coming down my piece of land, the path is mines. The path isn't up there, it's mines. And if that's too much to do in this day and time, the way people are, I'm sorry. It will be continued to stop you from coming down there, and we won't know what you're doing. If you're going to the cemetery, we don't mind, but tell us who you are and what you're doing there. Don't come driving down my path. I live back apart of roads, and I don't want people driving up and down there. I'm the one to keep that path up. I'm the one that pays for the rock goes in it. I'm the upkeepper. But if y'all will stop and take time and call Rocky Mountain and see why they're shutting the mines down, and that's why these people are opening mines up in Pitt County, is because Rocky Mountain is shutting them down, because of what I just told you. And they're talking about the men, it's not gonna have a job once they close the Johnny Dean pit. That's bull. They have misled y'all. They went right down the road to where the old Buck Mine was at, and where the blood farm's at, has reopened the Buck Mine again. And they got quite a few better digging down there to do. Y'all got that on record, y'all should know that what I'm saying is the truth. They are misleading, they not told the truth. They have led y'all down a path with blinders on. Do not listen to the bull they're trying to put across to you. These people in this community are real nice people. We are mixed. We're black and white, and everybody gets along. We don't have any problem with it. I guarantee you, you can't get any one of them to say a bad word about any other person in the community. So what is that saying? Then we got somebody that wants a sand pit, oh, they want to throw the trash out in the fire. But I hope y'all are smart enough, you don't fall for them, and listen to what these people has got to say in the community. And what I'm trying to say is, they don't want to put nothing back in the community, they want to suck everything out, leave us with a hole of water, which we don't want. We offered them to plant 100-foot and turn around and plant it in trees where we don't have to put it, look at that thing, put up a six-foot fence where the kids don't have to get in the water, where we can hold them off, all the way from 222 downside of my property back behind, and plant it with these trees that stays green year-round where we don't have to look at. And also turn that property, that 100-foot, over to the joining property. And the reason why is because no, none of the heirs can come down and cut them trees down, and we got to look at that nasty hole.
Okay. If you'll wind up for us, Mr. Brown.
No, no, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and good morning, everybody. My name is Tori Tyson, and I've been with American Materials for 13 years next month. I have never worked anywhere that long, first of all. The company I work for is not just a sand pit. I heard Mr. Brown talking about the sand pits in Rocky Mountain. I can't speak for them. I can speak for the place that I've been working for, for the last 13 years, which is a safe and people-conscious company. My safety bonus depends on, my Christmas bonus depends on my safety and the safety of others. Any incident we have, you know, it takes away from my safety bonus, which is just added a cynetic, not saying that I'm already safe anyway. an added incentive, not saying that I'm already safe anyway. But, I don't appreciate being, I'm not just, American Materials is not just American Materials, some big company trying to come in and take over somebody's land. American Materials is us, the families that, we work there. I mean, that's my job. I appreciate my job, I love my job. And it is true, if we shut down, I'm not the only one gonna lose a job. We supply every concrete company in the area with sand. So that's other job. We got plenty of vendors that come in that use our sand pit. Mom and pops, people that live right around it that come and use our sand pit. This is not just a sand pit. Like I said, it's a family. And I'm happy to be there, and ain't nobody pulling no wool over nobody eyes. I work hard. I work from shoveling sand to working in the office. I know every aspect of the company. And I see what we do. Yeah, there are a lot of trucks in the area, but we, if you come down and look at where the truck's coming from, a lot of the trucks not coming from American Materials Sand Pit. We got Greenville paving and stuff, you know, so we not even own that area, on that side. We got people complaining about stuff that we don't even have any control over. What we got control over is what we do. And what we do is an excellent job in the community. We make the, and it's not just a hole with water in it when we leave, it's a beautiful site when we leave. And Buck Mine is an example of a beautiful site when we left, and we're not mining. We ain't dug no sand on Buck Mine in I don't know how long. If anything else, we've been making sure everything is extra beautiful over there now that we left. And that's about all I gotta say. I ain't gonna take up all your time.
Thank you.
William Gueyon?
How's everybody?
Good, thank you.
But, same thing that Tori was saying, I've been with American Materials, you know, myself, over seven years. And our biggest concern out there is safety, far as anybody, you know, that's out there. We have meetings every Wednesday. We have the regular meeting for the company, we had the meeting for the truck drivers. Not when we're just there at that site, when we out delivering to anybody. You know, we always try to be safe on what we do, 'cause safety is our number-one thing. We're not here to take nothing from nobody. We're here to, you know, get along with everybody, get along with the community. We're not here to harm nobody. We're not asking to build, you know, whole lagoons or anything like that, or have cows or horses or whatever. That's nice to have, but we not producing nothing that's gonna affect anybody, far as the quality of the air, the water that you drink. So we not trying to take nothing from nobody, we just trying to help the community out. A lot of the people that's on over the road, we have delivered stuff too. That's why our trucks go down there, to help the people out on over the road. Like Mr. Brown said, when they need rocks and stuff, we got there. When y'all want houses built, or when people want driveways pulled with concrete, whatever, all that sand and stuff that sits down, so our pit comes out to help the community out, to build houses, to build barns, to build driveways, or whatever situation may be. That's what we there for. We're not building nothing that, like they said, that can put up trees, can put up fences to keep kids out of the water, whatever. We not trying to do nothing that gonna cause harm to the community or for kids that's around the way, 'cause kids can get hurt and drown anywhere. You know, the swimming pool, the bathtub, anywhere that there's water, kids can drown. Not just making it seem like it's just our place that's there, that we have, that's, you know, anything can happen. We just here to work. We just here to have a job, just like everybody else got. Everybody got different jobs that people might not agree with, but we here for our job. We here to take, to help the community, as well as the community helping us, to bring stuff out to you, to take customers in. Customers come off over the road, to come into our pit, to get stuff, to carry back. So we not giving off nothing that gonna seem like we causing harm to anybody, we just there to help the community, to get along with everybody, to try to do the best thing that we could do. We don't want the place looking bad, that's why we try to clean it up, that's why we do what we need to do, keep everything nice, keep everything neat. If there are other sand pits that's around there, that's not ours, that look bad, it's not ours. We take care of what we need, take care to do what we need to do, to help the community out, to grow, to keep jobs for everybody, the ones that comes in to bring our uniforms, the one that comes in to bring fuel to us, you know, whoever comes in. But we are there to help. We're not there to cause harm. We're not there to go against one another. We just want to be a big community to help everybody out, to do what we need to do, deliver what you call for and what you ask for. That's what we are there for. We're not polluting the air or anything. We just there to help out, to do what we need to do, to everybody keep their job. We deliver whatever y'all call for us to deliver and to bring to you. Topsoil out so you can roast stuff, rocks to put around your house to make y'all look good, so whatever's there, we there. And like they said before, a lot of the other communities, the job sites that's around there that need our sand, that need our topsoil, that need our mortar sand, concrete sand, to build. Without there, a lot of the stuff wouldn't be built. We wouldn't have a lot of this stuff without there. And you got to think about all the other places that take in our stuff, that they need, our stuff to help build community, to help the community grow. We not trying to fight, we not trying to picket, we just, like I said, we just all want to get along, to do what we need to do, to start this job, like we did the other job where Mr. Penner and all them stay on, live on. Anybody always welcome to come out there and look at the job site, to see how everything is. We try to keep everything neat and clean. We don't run twenty-four hours a day, we don't run at night, 'cause just like y'all, when y'all get off four, five, six o'clock, everybody want to go home, 'cause they done put in a long day, eight, nine, ten hours. So, you know, we have families, we have kids. We try to watch them, but once you leave the house and go out to your job, hopefully that your kids will be all right, your spouses will be all right, so when you go home, you know, to another day. That's what we trying to do here. Like I said, you know, we always try to be safe on what we do, the roads being built, you know, everything taking dirt, everything taking sand, everything taking rock. We just trying to put out, give in and take out. That's all we trying to do, to keep everything going and everybody to get along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Carson?
My name's Dave Carson and I live on thirty-nine oh five Fernwood Lane in Greenville. And I'm speaking for the Dupree family, the owners of the property in question. Remember, we met at Bellevoir last week and we had a very nice meeting? And I thought it was a very successful for us to get together, those that opposed and those that were for this. And we got to meet them and talk to them and go into detail about what their concerns were. However, I thought maybe it was, you know, I became curious about what the community felt. Some of those that were in Bellevoir were those people who were here before, and I wanted to broaden maybe my perspective, so I took it upon myself and I went out on my own and I visited Bellevoir, I visited 222, and I visited Old River Road, I visited Stokes Road. And you have a copy of the results of the interviews that I made when I visited those homes. When I visited, when I went out and visited those homes, I made it a point myself to bring up those concerns that were discussed here previously, that included road traffic, noise, child safety, the effect on groundwater, and the reclamation process, what was it gonna happen later? And I went from Highway forty-three all the way to Bellevoir. I visited every single house on that road. I then turned around and went on Old River Road and I visited all of the homes, except Mr. Brown, Rhonda McNeil, and Mr. Dawson, who opposed this before. But I visited all their neighbors and I went on Old Stokes Road and I visited every house there. I visited on 222, I visited nine homes. One was vacant, one person was not at home. I spoke to twelve people in those homes about this. And I introduced myself and I said, you know, "I'm here to see what your concerns or maybe objections to this project would be." Then I went on Old River Road and Stokes Road, and I visited thirteen homes there. One was vacant and three were not at home. So I actually visited, I saw nine additional people. So, I saw and spoke to twenty-one people that lived on 222, Old River Road, and Stokes Road. And beyond that cluster of homes there, there was about a half a mile, or three-quarters of a mile distance to the next homes. And it was amazing to me to get the flavor of what the community, how they felt, not a single person out of this twenty-one people that I talked to opposed this project. And you have the list, you have the numbers, you have the address right there. So it was amazing to me and a revelation that this indicated to me that the people, the community, did not oppose this. They were all for it. One of your board members recently made an interesting statement. He said, "Past actions are indicators of future behavior." And I really believe that this statement is especially true, American Materials. For thirteen years, they've been demonstrating and proven through their actions that they are a much, a much needed asset to discount. And I beg of you that, this is really, when you look at it from the total picture, this is a plus for Pitt County. And I think we've been very generous. We've given that extra hundred feet. The law only requires a hundred feet, but we giving two hundred feet. So I think we are doing our part for the community and for the neighbors that are next door. Thank you for your support, and I ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Next.
Jack Adams?
Plant miner with American Materials at the Penner Plant, Penner Mine. I've just got a few things. Mr. Brown's talking about a diesel pump. That diesel pump runs, but I guarantee you, if you pull up there in the morning to the gate, when I get out and unlock the gate, you gonna have a hard time hearing that pump. You got nearby to go down there where it's at to hear it. Far as safety, we are a safety-oriented company. We have to go by federal regulations, same regulations as coal mines. So, whatever we do is regulated. We're not there to harm the environment, harm anybody. Our policy is, you come to work and go home. We want everybody to go home at the end of the day. We say we want to be part of the community, we belong with the community, and we're there for the community. We don't furnish sand out of that area, we gonna probably end up somewhere else. But all those, they were talking about the children getting in the ponds. In the future, if that small child grows up and says he gonna build a house, what's the first thing he's gonna have to have? He's gonna have some sand, some concrete, whatever he's gonna build a house, it's gonna come from somewhere off somebody's land. Can't go out and tell a man he can't cut that piece of timber down, 'cause you'll be able to see a hog ass on the other side of the woods if you cut that timber down. I mean, that's, you know, trying to indicate what somebody can do with their own land that's, goes to a point, if it was gonna hurt somebody, I say, yeah. What this is gonna do is, for the dynasty to decide to develop this property, it'll bring in more tax money. But that's, you know, that should be up to the landowners, that should be his choice, that's what he wants to do with it, in my opinion. That's basically what I've got to say. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Tony Harris?
I'm Easton Burke.
Tim Bizzle?
Can we go out and order names?
Is that you? Yes, you may. If you'll come up and identify yourself, please.
My name's Cliff Harris. I'm with Harris Engineering and Surveying, we're the consultants that have helped American Materials develop these plans for this property. And I'm just here to answer any questions that the board may have or any of the citizens. Just want to add a couple of comments. I grew up in the Bellevoir community. I don't want to see anything come there that would harm this community. American Materials is a safe-minded company. It's one of the, I worked for dozens of different contractors, and they're one of the most safety-minded ones that I've ever worked with. Not only has this site already on the plans you've seen, they've given up, for the geometrics and the ideal location would be to have the plant site is on the very corner of 222 and Old River Road. To help the citizens, they've moved it around the corner, back behind the trees and all, trying to buffer it as much as possible to cut down on any noise, on any unsightly activity, if it's viewed that way. So they've already taken into concerns of safety and of bucking. That being said, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, we'll call on you. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Bizzle?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tim Bizzle, President of American Materials Company. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for your time allowing us to represent our proposal. I also like to thank the Plant Department again for their time and direction concerning this project. Before I get on to other things, I'd like to address a couple of the issues Mr. Brown made mention of. One, the Rocky Mount Mine's being shut down. I'm very familiar with that situation. One of those mines went out of business, we looked hard into trying to do, approached off that company, but with some environmental concerns they had, we couldn't make that work. We are currently, just for everyone to be aware, looking in that area. We're dealing with landowners right now because we are planning on going to Rocky Mount with an operation because there is a need there. There's only one pit left. Part of that is being hauled to Rocky Mount from our site right now, because they don't have any quality ongoing operations there. The customers have put a lot of pressure on us to come there and open a site because they know that we'll do it the right way. And so we are actively doing that. To my knowledge, I don't know anything about the mines being shut down because of tax purposes or anything like that, economy and some other issues created some things there. The other issue that addressed which concerns us was the Buck Mine reopened. We have not reopened the Buck Mine. The only thing that we have done there in the last little while, hauled probably forty, fifty loads of topsoil in there, where we're continuing our focus on the reclamation and making that a very nice site. So we hadn't mined anything out of there in years. And the recommendation of the board, as everyone's aware, we had a community meeting at Bellevoir Fire Department. We had a good turnout. I felt we had lots of positive feedback, got to hear the concerns of the neighbors and the community, and we tried to address them the best that we could. As has been stated, we've been in the Bellevoir community for thirteen years. Again, I'd like to thank the community. We appreciate the opportunity to be there. I'm asking you today to allow us to continue to be there. We want to be good neighbors, we've tried to be good neighbors, and I think that we are good neighbors. Our present location is owned by Johnny Meyer Penner, as you've already met, and this site has been recognized by our peers as an extraordinary site. We've been approached on numerous occasions about having this site put on national mining magazines because we do it the right way. As I told some people the other day that are in this room, you know, it hurts my feelings once in a while when I hear some of the things that I hear, because we work so hard to do things the right way. We spend a lot of money, we're a small company, but we spend a lot of money to do it the right way. And then when I hear the things that people saying that they don't really know, it really hurts a little bit. So that's why we've offered to carry some people around and we have, and showed them the things they were hearing wasn't necessarily- and we have, and showed them the things they were hearing wasn't necessarily true. Um, we work with a safety first attitude, and we've been able to coexist with the landowners, their children, their grandchildren, even their pet. Uh, they've built two gorgeous homes on the property. If you've not been out to look at it, I, I advise you to. It's very, very impressive. In planning this project, we worked hard to minimize the impact on the community and the neighbors and environment. As Cliff just mentioned, we moved the plant area from where the operations people had decided that it was the best site. Indeed, it was. It was a very safe site coming out and that, but it wasn't the best site for the community. So we moved it away from there. We've done our best to put it back and disguise it and hide as much of it back in the woods with the scale house and the plant as we can to screen it. Um, and, and so we're trying to be, again, good neighbors. Um, one of the things that, you know, everyone, and it's been addressed, I think Tori mentioned, we finish, we furnish every single concrete plant in this whole area with concrete sand. We're getting low on our reserves. I'll be the first one to, to say that. If we don't get this site done, I don't know that we're gonna find another site, get it permitted, get it done in a timely manner before we're gonna exhaust our reserves, then I'm not sure what's gonna happen with the concrete. As we already mentioned, there's only one left in Rocky Mount, so where are they gonna go from there? Certainly, the cost of the product is gonna, is gonna escalate, um, rapidly. Um, but everyone depends on us to provide them with a quality product, service, and we want to continue to do so. I'm asking for your support today to allow us to do that. Uh, I hope you trust and see that we've tried to be good neighbors, we want to continue to be good neighbors. And on behalf of American Materials and our customers and all of us, thank you again for your support and time.
Frank Peterson.
I'd like to say good morning to all the commissioners and the audience out here. My name is Frank Peterson. I'm at 3545 Old River Road. Been there pretty much 19 years. There's an account of 20 sand mining there on that road. I had a chance last week to meet with Mr. Bizzle. We toured the Buck and American Material Mine that they once operated. Uh, I'm only one. Uh, to me, as you stated, where you're mining sand from there, no doubt, that lake, the last home we built, and the one next to it, and the one next there, beautiful. That's gonna value your pocket, not mine. And I don't want to see anybody out there out of a job. I've been in business 25 years, self-employed. I am just one. I opposed to another sand mine one day. Now, if that mine was in the location such as the Buck American Material where they once left, there's no homes around it, can't be seen you back. I wouldn't object to it. But right now, I oppose to that mine. And I wish you commissioners would take in consideration the welfare of the residents out there. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Lena Walker.
Good morning. I am Lena Walker. I'm at, um, 350, 3545 Old River Road. Um, I oppose of the land, of the, the mine coming there. I do, however, um, think that the place like Mr. Peterson was saying, that Myra and Mr. Penner have there, is, is a beautiful place. How, I think our frustration is coming from so many other places that have been built there and nothing else done to beautify the place. So that is my frustration, and I, and I'm pretty sure that that's a lot of the other ones, other than the people that live right on it, right near where they're mining now. I'm sure they have a different perspective. But my perspective is, um, the beautification of the place. Their place is beautiful, yes, but the buffer or whatever you call it around is not. Uh, that's just my viewpoint. It is not beautiful. And if you're gonna come there and you're gonna put the same thing up, the only thing that they see is what's around their house. That pond is beautiful. Their houses are beautiful, but the buffer is not. That takes away from the community, the buffer. We can, we can't see what's behind it. We see what's on it. As I stated before, I asked you all to come out and look at it. I don't know if you did or not. The buffer is what's covering it up. So if you're gonna come there and you're gonna put the same thing, I oppose. We are tired of the same thing coming out being done over and over again, and nothing there to enhance the community. When we built there 10 years ago, no, we didn't foresee all this and would not want it. Now we have trucks running to and fro on Old River Road. And we, if, if that's gonna happen, we'd like to see the trucks deferred to 33, 43, not Old River Road. Um, they run at a speed that's not, you know, conducive for that community. And it's just not a safe area with the trucks coming in and out. Um, there was also a concern about the, the, um, since the pit is in basically backyards of people, about the tax value going up or whatever, um, is happening with the tax value. Um, and that, those are my concerns. So, yes, I do oppose if, if it's gonna cause, I mean, cause it to look like the buffer is now. And if you're gonna come and put just a, a rinky-dink fence, that's not acceptable. So I think that's where all the frustration is coming from, from the, the, the people in the community that don't live right near Myra or behind Myra and Mr. Penner. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Sam Dawson.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Sam Dawson, Jr. I live at 4337 Old River Road. Um, I'm not a professional, and I've heard all of these concerns, uh, many that were mentioned today. I've heard them two or three times, and I'm sure you have too. Uh, my concerns have not changed. Uh, I did speak with Mr. Dupree, I believe it was, when we were out in Belvoir at the community meeting. Um, I find it interesting he didn't come visit my home and take a look at what this existing mine looks like from where I live. Um, the comments that were made about Mr. Brown and his chickens and his dogs and all of that, Mr. Mr. Brown lives right behind me. Uh, I've heard the chickens, I've heard the dogs. The dogs guard my house. They're little, little dogs. They're not rottweilers or pit bulls or anything. Uh, the dogs make no noise. The chickens make no noise compared to the trucks that roll through there early in the morning and literally vibrate my house. The ground shakes from the trucks coming through sometime. Um, when you talk about safety, uh, I've voiced many times over that I've got children, they're not little babies. I've got an 11-year-old and a 14-year-old, but they're adventurous children. Uh, I think most boys are fairly adventurous. You talk about a fence, uh, you talk about trees. Um, I see these things as being more of an interest to them to explore than a deterrent to keep them out of this pit that we're talking about. Um, obviously, I'm in opposition of having a, a sand pit in my backyard. Uh, and it would pretty much literally be in my backyard or to the side of my backyard. And I see it as being a danger to me or to my children, to my family. I see it as being a danger to the families around me. There's a neighbor about 20, 30 feet from me that's got two little children. Um, I, I don't see this thing as being a positive. When you talk about it being beautiful, um, the houses that are right on the property that the existing mine is on are no doubt, no question, very beautiful. Depending on the angle you should happen to be looking. If you're standing right in front of them, beautiful homes. Uh, and I sure, I'm sure it only gets prettier as you get closer. If you're coming down Highway 222, however, I challenge you to even be able to see the homes because of the so-called buffer that's there. Uh, to me, it's a hill of dirt with some grass growing on it. And if you put in this existed, this proposed mine, you bring it closer to my house with a hill of dirt with grass growing on it. You put a fence on it and a couple of trees around it, so then you're talking about a hill of dirt with some trees and grass and a fence. Those things, uh, it's been said that beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I'm sure the people who own it and who benefit financially from it will find it quite beautiful. Uh, if I owned it and was getting the money from it, I'd probably find it quite beautiful as well. But as it is, I see it a danger and an eyesore to the community. I also see it as stunting the growth of the community. As has been mentioned, you can't, you, once it's there, you won't be able to build homes, so that stunts the possibility of any future growth as far as enhancing the community. And I guess that tells me I need to go. Uh, I've wound up. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have that have signed up for the public hearing. Um, we will defer to you, Mr. Rhodes, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. Okay, just a minute. We'll have to go with procedure. Um, if, um, now we'll see if the commissioners have any questions or anyone they want to speak to about this or any questions from Mr. Rhodes.
I have one.
Okay.
James, uh, that where Everett gentleman lives right across from the Old Dupree home, is that gonna interfere with his site there, his home? Do you know what I'm talking about? He built there about eight or 10 years ago. Cliff, you know what I'm talking about, don't you? Jackie Everett. Would that interfere, it's not gonna interfere. Would it be farther towards the river than where that particular site is? See, I go by there every day almost. I know what goes on.
This is, on, on the screen is Mr. Everett's home right here where the cursor is. And this is one reason staff has requested more information about the processing plant. It will be screened. We want to ensure that it's screened appropriately from that residential dwelling there, just as we've looked at for Mr. Brown, Brown's property on the opposite side. So, yes, we're taking that into consideration.
See, I'm, you know, and, and I, I just went along the Stokes Road. I go along there quite a bit because I live right there in the community. But, uh, I'm more concerned real, I'm concerned about all of them. And, and to me, you know, we look at projects different. I look at it different than what most of these do. I look at it as going to be an uplifting for the area. But his there is a little different than most of them. And, you know, the county at one time was thinking about buying and putting a waste site right down there between that and the river. That, for the, and moving one from Faulkton. I, would it go into that area? You know what I'm talking about?
The proposed mining operation is...
I, I mean, the mine operation, I know what that is, but I mean where this, where the loading part will be and the trucks will be coming, which there won't be more truck. See, a lot of them are fussing, but you have more noise from the peanut market than you do that. But that's beside the point. And, uh, but, uh, that area right there, what, can you tell me?
If you, on the screen, and I think I know you're, what you're asking, Mr. James, um, the Everett home is right here in the tan parcel.
That's exactly right.
The area proposed for the processing plant is in the somewhat cleared area and might extend a little bit back into the wooded area across 222 from that site.
Well, couldn't they go a little bit farther down there on Highway 222, uh, back towards the river?
Actually not because of the constraints of the floodway and wetlands. That is pretty much gonna be contained on a, I'll call it an island of sort where it is developable for a processing plant. So what they have done, ideally, they had wanted to place it up here. They have moved it at least down NC 222, right on this parcel, to lessen the impact on a area that has more residential uses.
Well, see, that's a cleared field. That's close to five acres in it right there where you got your area.
Right, exactly.
And they're gonna mine that particular area, right?
No, sir. That is where the processing plant, there may be some minor mining in around there, but for the most part, that will be the processing plant.
Well, don't they mine where the processing plant is as they leave of state law that it has to be? Cliff's saying, yes, I knew that you did too. That will be laid off just like where they have built the homes. I don't have no, but I am concerned about Mr. Everett. I make sure that, because this project is gonna last approximately how long? The one that you've been there has been right good while. How lo, how many years would it last approximately?
About the same length of time.
About the same length of time. So we're talking about probably to complete it eight years, something like that, eight to 10 more years that it will be there. Okay. We ready for a motion? I'm ready to make it.
Okay, thank you. We have one other commissioner that wants to speak, and then we'll do a motion. Mr. McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to, uh, visit that area, uh, and talk to some citizens and some of the constituents in that area, uh, for about three hours. Uh, first of all, I want to say that Mr. Tim Bizzle did an excellent job and during his presentation at the Belvoir Fire Department and along with, uh, his staff. And, and also I had an opportunity to, to visit that whole area, surrounding area and, and look at the Penner, Penner homes and Penner, Penner homes. And that is a very, very, very beautiful home. And I think the status around that home certainly was, was attracted to the eye. Now, however, you know, and, and listen at the concerns of the other, uh, citizens, uh, my constituents, they, they view somewhat differently. Uh, they didn't see this as, as, as already indicated, uh, by you that, that they, they are very concerned about the, their conditions of their surrounding home. So, uh, while I think that, that, that Mr. Bizzle and his staff did an excellent job in, in their presentation, I have to be allegiance to the concerns of my constituents. And at this present time, I am opposed to this, to this matter.
Okay, Mr. Garris. Let's go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to make a few observations. Uh, after our meeting here, the Board of Commissioners meeting on the 18th, I rode out to the area on the 19th and looked at that whole area out there. And I was very impressed with the reclamation that had already been done. Uh, I also attended the community meeting that was held on the 26th, and I think that meeting was well-attended as well as our previous commissioners' meeting and this commissioners' meeting. And I appreciate everyone that took their time to go to all three of these meetings and express their opinions and their concerns. I think that a lot of the concerns that were expressed, even though I believe that they were legitimate concerns, was, is really not the responsibility of American Materials. One of the biggest concerns I heard was the traffic up and down, uh, Old River Road. And American Materials has stated several times that they do not use Old River Road as a primary traffic area. They only use it when they are delivering product to a customer there. So even though that traffic is a legitimate concern, it is not the responsibility of American Materials. Uh, I've also heard the, the concern of safety being mentioned several times, and I am very, very much indoctrinated on safety issues and safety concerns. I worked with DuPont for 29 years, and that one of their, their first goal is you better work safely. If you don't, you're gonna leave, you're gonna leave the plant. So I'm very, very much aware of the safety issue, and I have listened to American Materials state their position on safety. And I am convinced that they're very safety conscious and will do everything they can do and will do everything they can do to make that area as safe as possible. And I was also impressed with the reclamation process. I conclude that the reclamation process that they do will actually increase the value of that property because it is surely a beautiful area, and not just that specific property, but that community. If you live next to a beautiful piece of property, then your property will be increased in value also. So I think that they have done a good job. The other thing that I am concerned about as a county commissioner is to make sure that we maintain the maximum number of jobs that we can in our community. This company is generating jobs, not just for the people that work for the company, but for the suppliers and for the community. Also, they perform a valuable service to our community, and hopefully, this building business is going to pick back up real soon, so we're going to need their product to improve the overall economy of our community. So I'm going to support the conditional use permit, and I just personally feel like that is the right thing to do. I respect the opinion of everyone that has expressed a concern and opposition, but if I look at it in, on balance, then I think that it is the best thing to do to support the conditional use permit.
Okay, Commissioner Webb, and then Commissioner James.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a quick statement and one question. I really think in this case that the mine doesn't actually encroach on anything because it's done within the bounds of private property. We're not talking about taking over other people's property. When it comes to the buffer, I don't know that we had the authority to set standards on what a buffer should look like, or that it has to be beautiful to one person or another. And I think the company, just from what I've seen of them, has done their due diligence with safety, as far as personal safety of the people around it. And I don't know that they've had any, and I haven't heard anyone say that they've actually had a safety issue, and so we're starting to operate in what ifs, not in facts. And the last thing, the thing that was mentioned about the truck safety, has American Materials' trucks caused any traffic-related accidents out there?
No.
Because, you know, I would think not, because I haven't heard about it, and trucks those size would cause a massive crash if they were involved. I haven't heard anything to suggest that, and I hadn't seen any paperwork on it in the media. So I would also be supportive.
Okay, thank you. Mr. James, a motion?
Yes. Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the two motions, motion number one, motion number two, that has been recommended by the Planning Department here in Pitt County pertaining to the sand mining operations there.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, comments? Okay, if we'll vote, please. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Rhodes, and we'll move on to our next one. You can stay right up there if you'd like.
Madam Chairman, I want to make one statement.
Yes, sir.
Remember, I was born and raised in that community, and I've been there longer than probably anybody living here. And don't think that I don't love my community. If you know me, I fight independent. And don't think I'm not frank concerned about you all and that. But believe me, it's not going to lower the value of your property by any means.
Okay, thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Rhodes, we'll give you all a minute, if you'd like to leave, that'll be fine. Our next public hearing is, we're going to hear about daycare, residential daycare.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rhodes?
This is another conditional use permit request by Kimberly Alexander for residential daycare facility. This is also handled in a similar process as we just did for the mining operation, so...
Let's get this one cleared.
Not good. Let's start over again here.
Okay. Let's get that one cleared, please.
And again, the quasi-judicial procedure is very similar to what we are, exactly the same as we talked about previously. Those wishing to speak will need to be placed under oath, and we're looking for specific evidence in support or opposition to this particular request. So with this, I'll ask the clerk to swear in anyone that would wish to speak.
Okay. If there's anyone here who wants to speak to this, pro or con, if you'll come forward, you have to be sworn in, even if you choose not to speak as we move along.
We had no one signed up.
No one signed up.
Please write the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
Again, this is for residential daycare located within Rolling Meadows subdivision at 333 Dorcas Terrace. This particular area is designated as suburban residential in our land use plan. Proposed hours of operation for any of these types of land uses, this is part of the conditional use permit, the actual hours that it will be open, in this case, is proposed from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Just to orient you as to where this is located, this is a very busy area as far as our planning jurisdiction is concerned for the county. To the west side is actually the city of Greenville, and also a fair amount along the road right of way, it says 10th Street here, also known as NC 33 East. We have a small island of property that's currently within the planning jurisdiction of the county, here in the middle of it. The Village of Simpson's extraterritorial jurisdiction is to the east side of that property as well. And again, this is a residential subdivision, as shown on the map, with the existing land uses all in tan, those would indicate residential uses. The area bounded in yellow here is the actual lot being considered for this use. There are three items to be considered as part of the conditional use permit, and the first is security fencing, the location, and also the hours of operation that we've already talked about. And again, we'll consider these criteria that we do for any conditional use permit. Will this materially endanger the public health or safety? We feel like the daycare facility for the children will not materially endanger this, the public health or safety in this area. Will it injure the adjoining or budding property, the values of those properties? We feel like that it will not, and that the hours are consistent with the type of activity in this particular development. Is it in harmony? Again, this is a residential daycare, there are limitations on the number of children that can be housed there during the hours of operation. We feel like it is consistent with the surrounding land uses, and it is in conformity with the plans of the county commissioners. So with that, the staff recommends the following motions. Number one, that the application is complete and complies with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and also approve the conditional use permit per the development standards in the ordinance, and particular hours of operation would be 6:30 a. to 6:30 p. And we're ready for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. We'll declare the public hearing open, and we have no one signed up, and no one was sworn in besides you. So I'll declare the public hearing closed. Does anyone on the commissioners have a question?
Madam Chairman, motion to approve. Both conditions.
Okay.
Both conditions.
All the conditions, thank you. Let's vote if there's nothing else. Okay, it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we do, I'm going to do a little chairman shifting, if it's okay. You tell me, Madam Attorney, if I'm not doing okay. We have one public address to the board, and I think I'm going to move it up to before our number seven for our presentation. That's okay with everybody. Commissioners, okay? All right? Our public address to the board.
And we have one speaker signed up, Brenda Harris.
You'll come forward, Ms. Harris.
I thank you for that move up. I'm Brenda Harris. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a recap. It says that we've been here for a couple of years, telling you that civil rights comes above North Carolina law and local law. Each one of you want to be in order, you want to ask your county attorney. So I'm going to explain to you a few things that you might want to listen to. Recently, you've had citizens that came and said our values went up in neighborhoods that they shouldn't have been. You need to know that the citizens are on the move. You need to know that the federal government is in Pitt County in education, and you've got some benchmarks to have mandated by December. You need to know that Brenda Harris is in contact with federal agents. Because we need to have civil rights, and that doesn't mean because you're black or white. It means because we're all born in America, and if we pledge allegiance to the flag, we have a right to stand by it. You know, I have a sweet spirit, I came with a little bit of fiery one, but the Lord gave me an honesty that says, you know, when you stand for right, you stand because, not because somebody stands with you, but because the facts are there. So I think an awful lot of our county attorney, some of you I rever with great respect, some of you I wouldn't write home about. Because the bottom line is, is that when we foreclose on four people that are Afro-American right now, we have to understand why those 1994 to 1998, or 2008, over 100,000 accounts are not paid. They're not collected, they don't have letters. You have to understand that civil rights layers on top, but when the feds come in in education, they're going to come in in taxes, they're going to come in in values, they're going to come in and say, Brenda, why, does somebody watch you when you use a public computer at the tax office? Ms. Booker comes out of her office and sits in an office and watches me. I think it's the funniest thing I've ever seen, because I think that it borders on mental illness, and I'll go before the Lord saying, folks that have to watch somebody doing nothing have a problem themselves. Now, I'm not known for biting my tongue, but I'm known for when I stand, I stand with evidence. So you have civil rights and education problems, you have civil rights and tax problems, you have civil rights in our courts. I had a sticker violation, I went to Aiden, I looked at the courtroom and I said, Lord, what is going on here? I hadn't been in many years, thank God. It was 90% Afro-American and 10% white, and I said, is that all that does the crime, Lord? And you know, it's okay to talk to the Lord, because as long as you don't answer back, we're not quite mentally ill. Because we ought to have a relationship with Jesus Christ, in my opinion, because he gives us wisdom, or we wouldn't be praying before the meeting. But I'm telling you that you could lose federal funds. I'm telling you that your tax department leadership is a problem. When I come in in peace, and I stay in peace and I get watched, we have a mismanagement of our administration. You need to understand that when the civil rights comes, they're going to end up in the court system, and it's going to be called a forensic audit. And when that happens, folks, it's all over but the shouting. You need to find out, how are you going to use a budget that doesn't have federal funds? Thank you, and God bless you. The litigation will be coming forth within 45 days. If this is the only way we can bring resolution, and you need to know, under federal law, you have no immunity. God bless you, we will not come along, the citizens are rounding.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Okay, I would like to have a motion to approve the resolution of the session.
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. And, okay, I will ask Melanie Bryan if she will come forward. And if it's okay with you, I'll ask her two sons to come up and stand with her. Will that be okay with you? Okay. Come on up, boys. We've kind of raised these fellows.
Has Mama done good so far?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to go that way just a little bit, so I can lay this thing down here. Hand me that. Thank you. I was going to get one of them to do that.
Sorry.
Step one up here a little closer. I hope I can get through this. And I'm going to leave out some whereas's, I'm just going to read the statements, I'll do one whereas. I'm going to preface this by letting all of you know that everybody in Pitt County should love Melanie Bryan. Don't you agree? I see a lot of nods out there, I know that all of us do. And she's a very special person, and she has been one of the most diligent, hard-working people for the good of the citizens of this county, and I think everybody will agree. Here I go. I may turn it over to you. Melanie T. Bryan has served the citizens of Pitt County faithfully during her career from July 8, 1996, to July 31, 2012. Melanie T. Bryan served in the capacity of Chief Financial Officer and Deputy County Manager. And Melody, Melanie T. Bryan has been a loyal member of the county's management team and has provided leadership to several departments within county government, including Tax Administration, Board of Elections, Animal Shelter, and the Department of Social Services. With Ms. Bryan's leadership and efforts, the county received its first Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award in 1997. Was that meant for me? I've got a long ways to go. This is the longest resolution I've ever had to read. That speaks well of you. The Animal Shelter and the Department of Social Services. With Ms. Bryan's leadership and efforts, the county received its first Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award in 1997, and has since received this award for the past 15 consecutive years. With Ms. Bryan's leadership and efforts, the county has continued to receive the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. This award has been earned by financial services for the past 21 consecutive years. With Ms. Bryan's efforts to promote Pitt County, under her leadership and initiative, the county received the 100 Best Communities designation. Ms. Bryan's excellence in financial management, she contributed to the county achieving a double-A bond rating and to maintaining this rating through these challenging economic times. Ms. Bryan co-led the Greenville-Pitt County Leadership Institute Training Component for Local Government Day with the Chamber of Commerce for three years. Ms. Bryan was instrumental in leading the conversion of Pitt County Mental Health from a county program to a local management entity known as East Carolina Behavioral Health. Ms. Bryan successfully assumed responsibility for billing and collection for EMS in-house during the year 2007, which had an $845,885 deficit in '06. At the close of 2011, the EMS fund ran a surplus of $1.2 million. Ms. Bryan has been instrumental in bond financing efforts of over $350 million of infrastructure to the benefit of Pitt County. Ms. Bryan has also been instrumental in the bond refinancing, refunding efforts that have resulted in over $12 million of direct interest savings to the benefit of Pitt County. Melanie T. Bryan has always tried to identify ways to improve the operation of county government. Therefore, be it resolved, that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners extend their sincere appreciation to Melanie T. Bryan for her services, years of service to the citizens of Pitt County and Pitt County Government, and wish her much success and prosperity throughout her retirement, and we further thank her, from the bottom of our heart, that's not in here, for her commitment to the Pitt County citizens. Adopted this the 9th day, July 2012, and I'm so happy I'm chairman and got to sign this. We love you, thank you.
Thank you.
Whoops. Sorry about that. And now I... Thank you.
I'm going to say a word to you.
Other than, it's been a wonderful career. As you said, these guys were three and five when I got here. And she's done a great job with these guys, by the way. And I just, I was always the county's...
And I just, I was always the county's biggest cheerleader.
You really were. And you should have been in there soon. And I hope it was, kind of. But thank you so much, Melanie.
Thank you, thank you.
And let's see, we'll take that, we'll put it back here if you want to.
All right.
And, because we've got to stay up here.
And these guys can go to work now.
Okay. They can go to work now, she says. Thank you for coming, boys. And, Marv?
Are you going to be able to do this?
Yeah.
You want to run around the block?
No, I'm ready.
Okay. And you need to get, and I'll get up here. I can hold this.
You need a pocket. Today, we are doing service awards, recognizing employees with 5, 10, 15, 20, and 25 years of service. If you would hold your applause till the end of each category, we will start with the five years of service. And our first recipient is Robert Armstrong with the Sheriff's Department. Marvin Bunting with the Detention Center.
Congratulations, Mr. Bunting. Thank you for being here.
Leonard Cowyer with Social Services.
Leonard, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Shante Carson with Social Services.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Violet Collins with Social Services.
Thank you for your service.
Jennifer Costanza with Public Health.
Thank you for your service.
Eddie Flake with the Pitt Area Transit System.
He's not here.
William Gibbs with the Sheriff's Department.
Where is he? Okay. Thank you so much for your service.
Tammy Harris with Social Services.
Tammy, thank you for your service.
Aubrey Hartzog with the Detention Center.
Thank you.
Daniel Hughes with the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you for your service, Troy.
Troy Martin with the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you for your service, Troy.
Carolyn Morgan with Social Services. John Silverthorne with the Pitt Area Transit System.
Thank you very much for your service, John.
Michael Sutton with Communications. And Catherine Taylor with Public Health.
Okay, we'll give these people a round of applause.
In our 10-year category, Tamatha Braddy with Social Services. Donnie Bullock with the Solid Waste Department.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock, for your service.
Tammy, thank you for your service. Aubrey Hartzog with the Detention Center. Daniel Hughes with the Sheriff's Department. Troy Martin with the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you for your service, Troy.
Carolyn Morgan with Social Services. John Silverthorne with the Pitt Area Transit System.
Thank you very much for your service, John.
Michael Sutton with Communications. Catherine Taylor with Public Health.
Okay, we'll give these people a round of applause.
In our 10-year category, Tamatha Braddy with Social Services. Donnie Bullock with the Solid Waste Department.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock, for your service.
And Scott Elliott, the County Manager. And that's that category.
Okay.
In the 15-year category, it's Nicole Hall Wilkins with the Human Resources Department.
James Heath with the Farmer's Market.
Barbara Jones with Social Services.
Congratulations, Barbara. Thank you for your service.
Chad Singleton with the Detention Center.
Congratulations, Chad. Thank you for your service.
Wanda Streeter with Public Health. And that's everyone in our 15-year category. In our 20-year category, we give these folks a watch, so that's why you see the nicer little blue boxes here. Kristy Adams with Social Services.
It's kind of an incentive to make sure you stay on and come back.
See if they had just given me the watch.
And I brought my biggest cheerleader with me.
Oh, thank you so much. We appreciate your service.
She put up with me for 20 years.
Oh, okay.
Elaine Black with Social Services.
And they get to choose their watch, I think, in that category. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Here you go.
And Ramona Netsnik with Social Services.
Congratulations, Frances. Thank you so much.
And a round of applause. And then we have one employee in the 25-year category who's been really busy lately, been in the newspaper, Willie Hyman with the Sheriff's Department.
Good job. Okay, we would now like to, excuse me, is that everybody?
That's everybody.
Oh, okay. I heard a little whisper, I wasn't sure. We would like to invite all the honorees and everyone else here to a reception, and if you'll come through this door back here and exit out on this side, we have some refreshments back there, and we'll let the honorees go first. But everyone is invited. Thank you. Welcome back. After our break, for our reception, I'll call everybody's attention back to our agenda. And, Ms. Bryan, if you will do the manager's report for us.
Sure. Your next meeting dates, August the 6th at 9:00 a.m. is a regular board meeting, and August the 20th at 6:00 p.m. is a regular board meeting. The National Association of Counties Conference is July 13th through 17th in Allegheny County or Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference, which is our statewide conference, is August 16th through 19th in Wake County. Want to announce that we had two departments that were filing grant applications, and the grant applications for one was due last week before we had this meeting, and the other one will be due before your next meeting. First one is from the EMS department. They have filed a grant for personal protective gear, which has no required match. The Planning Department is putting together an emergency solutions grant, which is coming from the state. It does need a match of both cash and in-kind, and I think Mr. Rhodes would like your concurrence that when they get this application put together, as you know, in our budget, we put aside money for matching grants and opportunities. This grant, and James can fill you in when he's up next, but this grant will work right in line with our 10-year Journey Home and our homelessness program, and they, I think, would like to ask for up to $25,000 in a cash match, which we do have within the budget because we budgeted some money to match grant opportunities that came up throughout the year. And then lastly, if you saw today's paper, there's a nice article about the College Park Baptist Church and the Grift and Mission Ministries replacement home that they're doing in Winterville, and I think Mr. Rhodes would like to show you just a couple of photos from last week. They picked the hottest week of the year to come work on our behalf.
Exactly. And a holiday weekend. Before you start, do we need to do a motion on the grant? Are you going to tell us that? Or you tell us, whichever. Or you tell us.
I would prefer to have that, because we will be, this grant application actually hasn't even been brought forward to us yet, but it's going to be a quick turnaround, so we would like to have some concurrence that that matches set aside, so we can write it in.
Okay, let's do that before you get started.
That's fine.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
Okay, a motion made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Let me ask a question to two before we go there.
Yes, sir.
You said it's $25,000. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What is it going to be used for?
This money in particular will be an extension of what we have had money for in the past for some emergency housing options. This money is actually set aside for rapid rehousing for those people that are homeless, so we can get them in permanent housing as quickly as possible and out of the shelter. That is the intention of this money.
Where's the $25,000 coming from?
$25,000 is a one-on-one match for the funding that we're requesting through the state that's handed down from the federal government.
All right, but from Pitt County? Continues fund.
Melanie. We have, no, sir, we have a grant local match in the budget, which is funds set aside for these opportunities that come up throughout the year. It doesn't touch the board's contingency, it's a separate pot of money.
Okay.
I'm chair.
Yes.
Melanie, maybe you can help the two. How would this affect the 10-year homeless plan in terms of, it sounds like it would?
Absolutely helps implement some of the strategies in that plan and getting people in a permanent housing solution versus being in the shelter itself. So this is a logical extension of some of the grant funding that we've had in the past that is now going away as of September of this year.
Okay. It passed, Mr. Rhodes, so we'll go on now with your...
Real quickly, and this is just an acknowledgement of the second year of having College Park Baptist Church come into Pitt County and help with the replacement housing project. You may recall, two or three years ago, our funding for replacement housing went away when the home consortium was disbanded through the city of Greenville. This is just an opportunity, these people come to town from Winston-Salem, they brought in about 75 volunteers this year, brought in money to provide resources to build this home. This house is being constructed right behind the existing home that was not repairable through some of our other programs. A replacement house was necessary. This is located right behind the town hall in Winterville. And you can see, this was day one, when they first arrived, Billy Tarleton with Grift and Mission Ministries had done the foundation and subfloor work. So when they got here last Monday, that's what they were looking at. Day one, they started erecting the wall sections. By the end of second day, you can see the roof is on and starting to do some shingling work.
Amazing.
And by the end of the week, totally dried in, you can see the sheet rock inside to be put up at a later time. So this is about Thursday going into Friday of last week, and then by the time they left on Friday, after five truly hot days and working through the Fourth of July, you can see the siding's on, the shingles are on, doors, windows are in, and now it's truly dried in, so Billy Tarleton and his group can go in and complete this hopefully by the end of the month. Great project, a lot of good people in here to help out on this project, and other partners such as the town of Winterville, Martin Community Actions provided the heating and air conditioning unit, which has already been installed. So a lot of good folks involved with this, and we're just real excited to get this group to come back every year, so we'll be looking at other partnerships in the future. But again, just wanted to inform you that this has been just a great project here locally.
Thank you. That's always such a good news item. Yes.
James, you might make public who the beneficiary of this, and that might be of interest to people.
Absolutely. This is for Ms. Patricia Waller, and she has been on our waiting list for the county for several years. Again, our waiting list for some of our community development programs continues to roll year to year, with the replacement funding going away, this was really, truly, the only option we had to get her in a suitable, habitable home as quickly as possible. So she and her family, she's got a daughter and two grandsons, and the whole household will move out the back door in their current home into this and will demolish the old home.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right.
Good news item. And, is that it? Okay. We will hear from Kathy Booker, and she has some good news too, I think, but I'll let you tell it.
We ended up, the end of the year, with a collection rate of 97.15, which was above the collection rate of the two previous years. And you have your collection report in front of you, and I'm asking for approval of the collection report.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. We'll vote, please. And we have two other items. I think we have to vote on both of those that we...
Yes.
Do you want to speak to them?
At the end of each year, we report to you our settlement statement, and we also have a charge to collect for the new year, and the figures are provided to you in the settlement statement, and you should also have a copy of the charge to collect for the new year.
So moved. Saget.
For both items?
Yes.
Both of them.
Okay, all right. Kathy, can you give them an idea of when the tax bills will be mailed out?
We have performed the annual billing this weekend, and now our next step will be to make sure those totals are correct, and if everything goes smoothly with that, we will send the file down to South Data, who is the print vendor. They will send us samples back. We will check those samples, the calculations, the values in different jurisdictions, and if all of that goes smoothly, then we will give them the go-ahead to bill. So you are looking very shortly about the annual bills coming out.
Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Owens, if you'll hit confirm, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And our next item is from Janice Gallagher. She's going to report on our legislative update.
Yes, good morning. Just briefly, Scott Elliott asked me to report back to the board on the number one North Carolina Association of County Commissioners legislative goal, having been successfully accomplished. And that was House Bill 438 for Human Services Administrative Flexibility, and that passed both houses and is now law, so that counties now have the flexibility to consolidate their human services if they choose to do so. This was previously afforded only to larger counties like Methlumberg over a certain population threshold. This was not an item that was included in Pitt County's list of legislative goals, but it was one that we had been watching and monitoring, and one that this board supported a month or so ago when it adopted its position to support the association's top three goals. So I wanted to let you know that that was, in fact, successful. And if the board would like, at a later date, at another meeting, I can provide you a full report on the, the General Assembly has now concluded their session in the early hours of Tuesday of last week. They've completed their session. I'm continuing to study everything that they have done that will impact counties, and we'll work with the association to be sure we understand the impact on us. I think we have a lot of good news to report, and I'll come back to you at a later meeting and give you a checklist as to how we fared on your particular goals and any other things that happened in the General Assembly that will affect counties.
Good, thank you for that. We'll look forward to it. I will entertain a motion for items for consent.
Motion approved.
Vote, please. Okay, under items for decision, Mr. Dickerson, if you'll come forward for the ground lease for the tower location. Thank you.
Good morning. I think we discussed this at length before, the location, they were talking about the leasing is back in the corner of the property near the Ronald McDonald House. The latest negotiations have brought the, they've agreed to a rent of $1750 a month. We started $1,000, so we think we've done well with that, and with that, be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. McLong?
I'm moving approved.
Phil, is that lease negotiable, or is that just a standard rate that they provide to us, or is that, can that be negotiable? Can you?
It's always negotiable. They offered $1,000, and now we're up to $1,000.
Can you say, can you say $2,000? Can you say $2,000?
I initially said...
What would they say? I'm just asking.
I initially said $2,000, they said $1,000, so they come a lot closer to our figure than we had.
We started at $1,000, so we think we've done well with that, and with that, be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. McGlaughorn?
I'll move to approve. If that lease is negotiable, is that just a standard rate that they, they provide to us, or is that, can that be negotiable? Can you?
It's always negotiable, they offered $1,000, and now we're up to $1,750.
Can you say, can you say $2,000? Can you say $2,000? What would they say? I'm just asking.
I initially said $2,000, they said $1,000, so they come a lot closer to our figure than we have to theirs.
And then that's renewed every five years with a 15% increase.
That's correct. So, it will go up.
It will, and let me clarify as well also, that because the aggregate term of this lease is over 10 years, there will be an additional step, and that's included in your agenda materials. So, right now, what you're approving is an option and an intent to lease at $1,750 per month. The option doesn't require any special notices or filings or advertisements, but if at the end of their option period they choose to exercise their right to lease the property, we will need to provide an additional advertisement, and within the confines of what we've agreed, open it to upset bids. And so, there is that contingency factor, I've spoken with U.S. Cellular at length about it and their counsel, they're aware of that risk factor. If there are no upset bids, it will remain at the $1,750, and it will go on as it's written, but there is a possibility for some change at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. We had a motion from Mr. James and a second from Mr. Garris. Excuse me.
How long is this lease?
An initial five-year term and then four five-year additional terms, so 25 total, or 20 total.
Thirty total.
Thirty total.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if we'll vote, please. Okay, that passes. And Mr. Dickerson, the energy savings?
Move the authorized chairman to sign this.
adjourn.
Okay. Any question? Vote. Okay. And, are you going to speak for Allen? Okay.
While Mr. Lee is approaching, this one is on your regular decision agenda because it is using contingency, and under the budget ordinance, any use of contingency requires board action as a decision item.
Madam Chair, I've come, you know, this morning in front of you to ask that you use contingency funds so that we can hire a part-time fire inspector. Currently, a fire inspector is out on medical leave, will not be returning back to the doctor until the 1st of August to find out what the prognosis will be from that point. So, trying to maintain the state mandated fire inspections that we have to do, we're asking to utilize these funds to hire a part-time inspector.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Let's vote, please. Okay, that passes.
All right, thank you very much.
And next, we, Melanie?
The next one is to select your voting delegate for the NCACC Conference in Wake County.
Anyone who's going would like to volunteer?
I'm nominated, Mr. McGlaughorn.
Okay. Mr. McGlaughorn has been nominated, anyone else? Okay. Let's vote. I'm assuming you will accept, Mr. McGlaughorn.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item, Melanie?
Earlier, you voted on Mr. Dickerson's item on the energy savings, this is the companion item which selects the financing for the deal. This energy savings project is $3.7 million. We are on the Local Government Commission's August 7th agenda for approval. We solicited bids from six different entities, we received four bids back. We are suggesting that you choose Bank of America's Public Capital Corp. as the entity to fund our loan with an interest rate of 2.87%.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, and we have, do you want to do this, Melanie?
With my departure later this month, we need to select an interim finance director to keep the financial operations of the county going, we need a second signature on checks along with Ms. Ward. Under the current process, I think the manager and his team have interviews scheduled for later this month, but that would not give time for somebody to be in place on August 1. It's my recommendation, along with Mr. Elliott's, that you make Chris McDaniel your interim. Chris has been my number two since 2005, and he's been in the Finance Department since 1999.
Motion to adjourn.
And, Madam Chairman, I believe, Melanie, if I were you, I would have changed that word "departure." That sounds mighty fine, I would have said "retirement."
Well, I think it should say "retirement," but still available. Okay, let's vote, please.
Chris does, too.
And I think she's already said that would be the case, okay? And we have two reappointments.
The Greenville Planning and Zoning Commission, Wanda Harrington and Brian Smith's terms expired on May 31st, they are both eligible for reappointment, and if reappointed, they would serve another three-year term through 2015.
Motion to approve.
Okay, let's vote.
And the Winterville Board of Adjustment, Jody Melnick's term expired on June 30th, and she is eligible for reappointment. The Winterville Town Council is requesting that the board consider reappointing Ms. Melnick to another three-year term to expire June 2015.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, let's vote. Okay, both of those reappointments pass, and we'll have our commissioners comment.